Hello.
Hey, we're here now.
Yeah.
Was it that?
Yeah, it says in. Um.
Or you're streaming stuff.
I wonder what we're reading. I don't know why the title says. But rely on something. Rely on something. I don't know if it's the right one, but.
Actually, somebody, I don't know either phone number, somebody texted me.
Mr. Whitson?
That all the cops and ambulance, the ambulance there on Logging Hill and.
Yeah, right here, right out here.
Yeah.
What happened?
Guy came off the highway, thought he was exiting ninety-three at a high rate of speed.
I wondered what that was. The guys were there. The car was all way up.
Yeah.
Like way, way up.
Yeah. That's what happened.
Well, they go off exit one thinking it was ninety-three south.
Yes.
Yeah.
I just missed it to the cops.
I saw the cops too.
But I could, I saw them. Yeah, the tow truck was all the way, like way up.
Yeah.
Misresolved.
It's just how technology.
Stuff is streaming to something. I don't think it's going to the right length though. Meeting has gone way too smoothly.
All right, well, we're gonna be in recess for just a moment. I'm gonna actually go use.
I was streaming. It's gonna work. Well, getting it, but I don't know. Because I already. I ended the stream, so you schedule it, it goes to that, it creates it, and I ended it, and I can't add to it at this point. The stream ended. So I can't, I don't think I can restream to that link. Like, I can stream live, but it's not gonna be the link. I don't know how to change that.
Working.
But we can record the meeting and put it online tomorrow because the people watching live can't comment anyway. So whether they watch it tonight or watch it tomorrow, I mean, it's an inconvenience, but. I guess that's my proposal is that we. Record the rest of the meeting and put it on.
Anybody want to leave? No topic, no.
They want. Meeting ended, and I can't reconnect to it and keep streaming off of that. So I would propose is that we record the video for the rest of the meeting, which we do anyway, and then we'll post it on YouTube tomorrow. Because the people watching live can't. Participate in the meeting live anyway. It's just for them to watch it, so I think it meets the full purpose if we post it tomorrow.
Yeah.
I think that's the best we can do with the technology that we're operating right now.
I mean, is the, are we looking at better ways of streaming and?
We were waiting for quotes still.
Yes.
They, is there some process?
I don't have an update. Yes, they are.
There we are, and I hunted something better. Good. Okay, well, we're back in session here and sorry about the technical difficulties. We got a very good overview of what they're looking at doing. Now, you need to accept this, we haven't. Right, so that's our next.
Yeah, yeah, we talked about being, so that there are a few checklist items that I indicated as being missing. I don't see any of them being major concerns. Number six, they. Number six is the state approvals that still be. Getting to us, and I believe we have the applications for the majority of those at this point. We don't have a written verification of service from the utility company yet stating that they will provide service. Twenty-one is a restoration related cost estimate we don't have yet. The elevation needed to be listed with the state grid coordinates. The operational brief, I was told there is one, but I think it didn't end up in this middle packet, so that will be coming our way. Number fifteen is the performance guarantee, which will be coming, and then the environmental assessment in response to the natural heritage beer and report. A lot of environmental assessment has happened or will be happening on this lot in relation to wetlands permits and evaluation of the conservation land. So that information exists, it just hasn't made its way into this application yet. So I don't see any items that would prevent this from being accepted as complete.
We're dealing with these together.
Um, more or less, yeah, you can. As long as you list the both.
I'm making a motion to accept this complete application privacy twenty-three and four eleven, twenty-three. Start more.
There's still real fail on there.
There are two existing snowmobile trails. Contain them. So far, the language has turned through this, that the existing snowmobile trails that are on this lot, but not to create any new trails. Existence, no, no trail, on the property line. Here comes across and it's up to the bridge over Bonfro Brook. The other one comes off Robinson Road down through the old bed line. And runs along the back edge of the Aaron Drive subdivision. And then comes across and works its way, connects somewhere before the Boba Bridge, or this trail, not trail.
You know.
So it's not looking to relocate, we need to relocate and trail, I'm assuming. Open space subdivisions that the open space permits, snowmobile trails. There's no use, you know.
Is, do any of the plans have the existing trails on them now? If they, if they don't, it would be. Right, if, if they don't, we should make sure that the existing trails are noted on there.
So. There are five waivers, four of the waivers are on the back. Kind of the same waivers as previous application, not to do the contours and buttons and unbillable ledge and things like that. So I'm not sure. If we have any room for the trail pockets up here, it's shown on the open space through the dash line there. I'll have to check if it's properly in there for that to move with the. Trails mostly was supposed to be on Aaron Drive. There's actually, they got fifteen or twenty foot recreations that run across the back of this. But when the snowmobile trail was made, it meandered a little bit. Onto, on property by maybe ten feet or so. You've never had a concern with it. I'd hate to have them think the idea to have to relocate it just for that reason. Unless, like I said, unless there's some restriction on open space. I mean, there's already a, there to put it there. Add to will just be require work for them to be retrieved. So the other. For those waivers for this, the fifth waiver is to contain overhead utilities for my house, underground utilities for the main property. Given the problems we have. Somehow. Put the, a note that the snowmobile trail does meander in. Or goes off the conservation easement into.
So I think it would be good to document where it is and not talk about it meandering, but document where it actually is and have it recorded or whatever that way, so that it's.
Yes.
That.
Yes. Yeah.
I'd like to share a couple of the department head comments with you all, if that's all right, from Public Works. Tim Sweeney does not recommend that utilities are underneath the travel lane under the pavement. That'll be something for the engineer to talk about later, I think, but he also requested that three-foot stumps are added in all the catch basins for sediment control. And I believe when I spoke to the engineer, Jason Lopez, he said that that'll be a little bit of a conflict between Public Works and Fish and Wildlife based on turtles. So we need to figure out a balance there.
Yes, those are a hazard for turtles for wildlife that has come up on kind of every subdivision. Including, starting with Hamilton Court, that was Jerry Hill, Pete George from projects.
Yeah. Since it's the same drive for me.
Power is on the other side of Robinson. Is that a? The power is on the other side of Robinson, so it would be.
Yeah, okay, yeah, then it read, then it read. And then Tim recommends third-party engineering review, which I think also highly recommend on the project scope. Fire Department, so this, this plan proposes residential sprinkler systems in each of the homes. Fire Department said that ideally they would have a thirty thousand gallon cistern for fire protection.
Yes, you do that present. So for not, not proposing a sprinkler system, a fire suppression system. So the fire suppression system is set up as a life safety. It also has a winter map hookup to the exterior of the building, so when the fire trucks do come, they can pump right into it and immediately start working on the fire from the inside as soon as they come there. Developers are very adamant about that. Not so much worry about the loss of buildings, but the life safety. With the fire suppression system, it's immediate. You know, fire suppression gives people time to get out. The cistern is more of a backup to a you know, the tanker and pumper truck, and it won't help the residents up there. And I believe it may have already been discussed in Psalm about where it was the same idea, though. It's the developers' desire to have a state of the fire suppression.
It may make sense.
Just in the ordinance says shall have system, so it would require a waiver.
And then we received one additional comment from Tim Sweeney, the Public Works Director today about the site distance. If you, I don't think I printed the site distance plan. I think so. There is a point at which it is very close to the road blocking the site distance. And Tim was just wants to make sure that in the third-party review that they confirm that the site distance is adequate.
Cause it looks pretty straight, but there's like a hill or something.
The hill, yeah.
Is it, I know it's in the packet, I think, that.
Oh, yeah. Oh, here it is. So. There is a point at which it is very close. In response, Jason Lopez did provide a kind of a zoomed-in model that showed that it works on paper. I think Tim just wants to make sure that it's gonna work in the field.
So, so really, it's like, yeah, what's that?
People shouldn't be doing dirty.
So.
Why, why I ask that, though? Higher speed limit is more site distance.
Oh, oh, yes, no, no, no.
So really, you know, people wanting these low speed limits are really a double-edged sword because they, they shorten site distance, you know, when, you know.
So Jason Lopez emailed Tim Sweeney, just out of preliminaries that this isn't, you know, just still get engineering review. But he showed it with different scale and the difference between Tim and his truck looking. And he said he feels like he's losing the site distance. The plan actually calls for grading, the raising of the road as it comes to Robinson. I forget what it is. Twenty-two inches, so that eye, eye line sight will actually increase.
Yeah.
Like, if you go out there on your sidewalk and you look at there, it's not gonna be what you see when it's actually constructed.
Don't they normally want the road to have a little dip so it, so runoff's not coming off the road onto Robinson?
Part of the, there is a standard for how it connects as well, so. It needs to, to, like this.
Other comments, so the waivers, so they're all partial waivers, so the waivers for the unsuitable land, ledge, wetlands and contours only refer to that back forty-eight years. Complied with everything for the, the parts to be subdivided for the development. They're just requesting the waiver for the back part that's for the conservation land, so that sounds reasonable to me. And then one other comment I made is that it was difficult to to tell whether the lots meet the lot frontage requirements, so I have asked the engineer to provide us with the, the measurements there so we can actually confirm.
It's open, what's it, you got everything in space?
Hundred feet, but on the cul-de-sac, it can be fifty feet on the cul-de-sac and then a hundred feet, a hundred feet back. So we just need them to show us those calculations so that we can confirm that. Yeah, so I don't know. You wanna open up?
Yeah.
Public hearing this evening.
All right, so this is a public hearing. I wanna open it up in public. We got comments, sir? Yes, sir.
I'm Josh Bash, only fourteen Briarwood, so I have a butter to collect that. I just have a couple of questions, mostly about the land area here, because I think there are two on the property that would be on the lot that's proposed, that's my house. Would those get moved? Where would they get moved to? But my wife and I are also concerned about potential runoff, if there's blasting or anything like that, well contamination. So is there any well testing that can be done afterwards, or can you just kind of walk me through that process? If that's even been thought of it. Cause we are downhill.
Which, which lot in Briarwood area? You're in.
Yeah, so. We wanted to. So don't move wetlands and protect the wetlands, so the wetlands will stay just as they are. As for the drainage, the there is test pit data where they actually test mostly for septic system, but they go to see how, how the soils are in that area. They are available. We can, can show you what soil types are for there. There was. As far as I know, all ledge, there was, there is some large boulders on the property. I'm not even sure if they're up in this area, but there are some, but as for ledge, I we haven't found anything. We haven't done ledge probes of the entire lot, but not expect. And blasting, there is blasting, that's where we. It's probably a good idea to get the whole blasting survey, and they're required. If they're gonna blast, they have to. Areas with their, they check their foundation, make sure everything's okay before and then after the same thing with well test.
I'll just add one more thing is that you'll notice that there is a fifty-foot buffer between the proposed lots and, and your lot here, so that's as part of the open space subdivision, they're required to have the perimeter buffer, so that's fifty feet that'll remain wooded and wooded and undisturbed. And that'll be owned in common by the homeowners association that's proposed.
Cause I believe there is, there's like a small trail back there too. That has been carved out back there as well.
Is it them on that side some trail?
Yeah, my neighbors on Briarwood have created very nice trail, trail network. She, they spoke to me and they, you know, give them my permission, they, they go out there and they use it all, all year, cross-country skiing, hiking, no motorized vehicles, very respectful. They call me before they even go out there with you know, weed whacker just to keep the brush back away for the ticks, you know, so they do have trails that go back there. Land's not posted, we open for, for anyone who wants to recreate back there. Hoping that as we put sixty-eight acres of the record into conservation, that they'll still be able to enjoy.
They just won't be able to make new trails.
They won't be able to make new trails. Yeah, so the, this here will be a document that's approved through the state and all open spaces. Both the green area, that's usually between the board, developer. It gets reviewed as a requirement now that they even I remember right, we change it to all the documents for homeowner associations and associated documents have to be reviewed by town council at the developer's expense. So there will be reviewed by the town's attorneys as to what this is, and that way it makes sure it links with the so that certain problems don't happen.
Is it, do you know, it's proposed that for both of the conservation areas, open space and the conservation, that it'll be open to the public?
There is no restriction on access for, for this one, for people to continue to hike, bike, and whatever, and use it, use the trails and walk. They're not looking to put no trespassing signs, it's still biggest restriction I've seen on there would be no timber harvesting. So, which is usually kind of permitted with a lot of the town open conservation, this is gonna stay, stay wooded, so. As for the green one, I've never seen a subdivision in Bo where they've restricted pedestrian access on, onto the properties.
I was saying, it's usually, I think it's even in the open space that it's open to public access.
And then there's, I'm not sure, law, unless you have your land posted, you're allowed to walk on any land. You know, which I've had, I've had numerous people get lost on the snowmobile trail and end up in my backyard. Mountain bikes, you know, they find their way, you know.
Civilization.
These are, you've got these for the public utilities, they go across, and then if the snowmobile trail is gonna be on there as well. All those easements would be included in that open space, right?
Or it would be if not an easement, just recorded on the plan, designated on.
Okay.
Right, 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 just be formally designated on.
Did anybody else in the public have any questions or comments or concerns? Sure. Yeah, they can't do anything at that.
Okay. I mean, I would have. Self, I also. I mean, cause like sometimes it'll ran at blocks.
The lot, the corners require a ground, so those will be put in. So there'll be one right there. How long this lot is, there'll be at least one on this corner. If it's over five hundred feet, it'll be one. I don't think that would be five three.
And, and I think there might be, and I know our markers don't say perimeter marker, but we have buffer markers that we tend to use on wetland buffers that we probably need to get some perimeter buffers as well, so they be marked on, on the properties.
When did the?
Uh, when we redid them recently, because the greens seem to like be camouflaged. They look like everything else in the woods.
Alright, so we sell from the public, yes?
Let the loan.
Over to the cutting, that's going to determine the language between the board. My experience has been that that land, the only thing you would take out is dead and diseased. Vegetation, trees, and there's no timber harvesting.
Yeah, it's specifically in which to open space within our.
Yeah. You you can't do much in that open space that protects the land. You know, and that's the idea of an open space development, is you show where, in a conventional development, which was the yield plan, he showed. You know, that they could get sixteen two-acre lots on this is what what they came up with. So instead of having to be a two-acre lot, an open space lets you take. It's at fifty percent, you could bring your develop that at least fifty percent of it gets protected. And the other fifty percent lets you bring your lot size down to one acre, so a smaller lot, keep it more compact to protect all the other land. So that green space does a pretty well protected.
Wouldn't be able to go out and create. New new trails, but like if there's an existing trail, so you use that the snowmobile trail as an example. Let's say a tree falls on that snowmobile trail, you'd be able to go out and clear that. But you wouldn't be able to open it up and expand it anymore.
Was undeveloped.
Language, by next meeting, I would hope that they have the draft language, even though we expect this to take months to go through the planning board process. You know, as part of the requirements or via condition of approval. Is that document be reviewed, be a public document, so that's something you can. Look at and make sure it doesn't allow timber harvesting.
Anybody else? Yes, sir. We will definitely be talking about that in future meetings.
Yeah, I would say if you come back to a future meeting when the engineer is here, that'd probably be the.
The plans do have a stormwater basin, and it looks like there's a stormwater basin on the corner. Of the road and Robinson.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, there's one, but I thought there was one. There was one near the corner. As well. Oh, right, yes, yeah, it's that, yeah, there you go.
If you want details as to where there is and how they're constructed, then.
But it will definitely be what we're looking at, that's part of the reason of the third party review, they will be looking at that. You know, that's one of our biggest concerns is that drainage is taken care of correctly. Like to see you back and ask him the question again, that's.
So the good time to mention that, so obviously this is an application that'll be heard at. At least another meeting, maybe more, but you will not get received notices each time. So you'll need to follow the agendas, or tonight they'll continue it to a date, you know. Follow it along that way.
Anybody else in public? Alright, now seeing, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And it's each meeting that we have that's on, they'll be open to the public again. But your your notification of the meeting, if you're in a butter. You get just the one. Yeah, keep checking back.
And if you're not able to make it to a meeting, you're always welcome to submit questions or comments in writing prior to the meeting, and we'll make sure they are heard. You can email. K M A K I N E N at bo nh dot gov. Where you can find me on the community development webpage. Yeah, so you can consider regional impact now, if you feel like you have enough information. Nowhere near the scale to the original. Twelve new, twelve new homes. I think the criteria looked at something like a hundred new homes near a prop, near the town line, so this is kind of in the middle of town. Twelve, twelve houses in the middle of town, I don't think rises to the occasion of regional impact.
I'll make a motion.
Now, just to clarify, you meant that for both of the applications, right, the CUP and the subdivision?
Yes.
Great. Yeah, sidewalk and then third-party review, I think, the two things to accomplish tonight.
Motion for third-party review?
Yeah. And I would like to be clear about. The scope of the review that you were asking for. Sometimes you request just drainage, but obviously you want to look at the road engineering, I would say, associated drainage.
Isn't it something?
Yeah, yeah, I know, I think since when he always says the case, but. Yeah. And so I think some communities ask a third-party review to review everything, like the subdivision regs or everything, all the components that. Basically, as staff and you as planning board members would already review, so.
Then increasingly, the site distance.
Like road engineering.
I think you would basically want to reference the road engineering and associated drainage. That would be what you would want to cover.
I'll I'll make a motion to seek third-party review by Gail. For the review of the drainage as well as the road conditions. Of the development, your application.
Oh, fair.
Hi. Don't send you to choose, choose the worst weather possible.
Actually, that that one sidewalk was the worst, probably a. So years. Playing board, other than ones that were like eleven below, but.
The one was snowing, snowing really hard down on River Road.
Yeah.
That was.
It wasn't like.
No. No. So the next one.
That's up to you.
I I guess, you know, some of it is is when we're gonna come back. I mean. And and you never know, I mean, February, we could have plenty of snow, it might, we could still have, you know. They'd probably like us to get this done before April last. Well, we have one at first, but as.
I know you'll miss.
Pick one, and if the weather's bad, can we?
It doesn't have.
Try to. Reschedule it, like if it's just like. Crazy weather.
Yeah, we just need enough time to renotice it.
Yeah.
We can't just say, oh, we'll do it tomorrow, we need to.
Right, right.
Do you guys like?
Yeah.
Sidewalks or?
Yeah, I mean, it's. Yeah.
Or or the afternoon, I know the conservation commission, some of the people aren't available.
On a Saturday, I would rather afternoon, my business is open until noon, so.
Do you want to do the?
Ten?
I was gonna say ten is backup date.
Yeah, I mean, if if something happens, I mean, we would. Probably reschedule at the next meeting on the fifteenth.
We're intent to work better for me, the third, I will.
Alright, so February tenth, is that what we're saying?
The one P M.
So there is, just like now, there is a. A window, a lot of. Back in here, but there is going to be a long part. Where you won't have to be on Robyn's road.
And then will the thunderline be safe?
Thunderline, the corners are already.
One P M on the ten.
Motion to continue the application. Five oh seven two three and four eleven three. Second.
See you next month.
So. But so next meeting is February first, that is for the final public hearing for zoning amendments, so tonight I have to post them. For that, so tonight's kind of last chance to wrap those up. So we just wanted to, since we have a little bit of time, just, I know a couple of you responded to my email and I appreciate that. I know Mike had a couple of things that you wanted to bring up, so if you want to do that. Know that, no, I appreciate, makes it easier for me.
Under E. Yeah, did you guys?
To Brian.
Brian?
You take it out, so.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone, thanks for coming out.
Yeah, pull those up.
Okay, which one are we on first?
Yeah, or do you say E?
Bo Mills next.
Where are we?
Some paragraph E. Bullet item number three.
So this is under the residential.
Recommended guideline. Says all developments shall have pedestrian natural resource access and are encouraged to provide. Adequate recreational use and community facilities. Such as trails, fitness centers, tennis courts, health centers, our swimming pools and amenities, including hospitality and meeting spaces. I'm concerned that. If we open those perks, for lack of a better term, to the general public. It's gonna. I don't know what the developer and homeowners association, if there is one, going to do with that, if they have to open it up to the community.
Encouraged.
Yeah, but it's it says shall. Well, and.
I I think it's it's open. I I I don't think it's either.
Well.
One or the other.
Well, then you go to purpose, number two. Subparagraph B, bullet item, third bullet item. Provide public and private amenities that attract visitors and residents to a vibrant center. Yes. I mean, if there's a homeowners association and they wish to sell pool memberships or tennis court memberships and stuff like that. That would be fine.
I don't think, yeah, I wouldn't think that you're saying it's free. Or like you said, if they wanted to.
Well.
Particularly for for.
I have a concern that several locations that say that. One, two, three, four. By seven. The bullet item. Allowing developments with shared and public access amenities.
I don't know that anything is forcing them to have. None of these, I think it's intended to encourage. But I don't think there's anything that's forcing it.
Yeah. Well, that that one word shall, that. E subparagraph three, all developments shall.
And and well, I think that applies to the first part of that, because then the others say are encouraged.
Tennis courts, swimming pools are not natural resources.
I read that as basically. Area surrounded by. Forests, don't put up a big wall around it, you have to allow access to that.
Yes.
And the the second part of me is a separate, almost as a separate sentence, it's one sentence here. And the, the second part of me is a separate, almost as a separate sentence, it's one sentence here, but. It like, in addition, developers are encouraged to provide X, Y, Z. But it does not state that like you can't charge for access to a swimming pool.
Would it help if we separated those out and created a number four?
We clarify, I think it would certainly clarify something that has caused some.
What is pedestrian natural resource access?
Trails.
Do that as like a hiking trail?
Yes.
Or walking.
Yeah, yes.
Making a fourth one clarify to it.
Or, or just putting a period and then making it two sentences.
Does that help?
Uh, it's just a concern of mine that, uh, you know, it, the way I read it, forcing.
Yeah.
Something. If a developer comes in, puts in those amenities and it's a perk to the, to the people who purchase. Whatever there and then you say, hey, but no, you gotta open it to public too.
And it just. See the point, there's four words with that, where one word would do.
You had something.
I was just gonna, I was gonna say, I think it's, I, I think if you separated that and just made it two separate sentences instead of creating a whole new. Four.
Um, right.
Would. Address the concern and make it more clear.
Hmm.
As to it's encouraged, but it's not a requirement.
Okay, so all developments shall have pedestrian natural resource access, period. Developments are encouraged to provide blah, blah, blah.
Yep.
Yeah, so number four.
Oh.
It's just that. Not even create a whole separate. And I don't think there's a need to create a whole separate.
Mm-hmm.
Number.
Right.
The purpose, subparagraph B, the third bullet.
It's just the up. The downside is a move a lot easier.
Ah, okay, so. Propose, so. The idea that, uh, development have to meet two of these objectives. One of them is public and private amenities. So I think it covers it by saying public and private. Public or private amenities, is that?
Well, that's a big difference for us.
Making both. These are public and others are private.
Should we just take it out and just say providing amenities?
Yeah, that would be one that we're addressing.
Yeah. Same thing for. One, two, three, four.
Yeah, I would.
Seventh bullet.
I would just strike that, yeah. And just providing amenities that attract visitors and residents to a vibrant center.
There you go, yeah.
So just say providing.
Yeah, yeah. And the seventh bullet too.
Yeah, that, it's kind of, I think, um, kind of repetitive.
Yeah.
So we could probably just leave it out.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Forget. So much.
I heard.
Yeah. Because I'm the.
I'm sorry.
That's good. And that's gonna be gone. And then the other one, I'm gonna split those sentences. Okay. I'll give it back to you.
No, man. Here's the rest of them. There was another one that. Okay.
Um, do you want to talk about, I've been playing phone tag with the, um, town attorney about. The, specifically about the cell tower one, but I really want him to make sure he blesses it, um. And. We've each left each other three messages at this point, so I'm hoping tomorrow's the day.
I have a question on that, um. What is, um, do we define stealth technology? We do.
I ended up with my zoning ordinance here, but it is in the. Definition section for the. P W S F section.
We've paid a little. Minutes that I just took too. Well, it's probably in the section, yeah. Um. It numbers it. I mean, any P W S F designed to look like a structure which may commonly be found in the areas surrounding such proposed facilities such as but limited to. Flag halls, farm silos, range of forest fire watchtowers or artificial trees.
And there's also a definition listed for camouflage.
How we just, I, I just one of my. Issues or things that I see is that sometimes. A, you know, like a monopole with nothing on it is like the most unobtrusive of anything than a fake tree. I, I did see that a lot of that.
Standard. You can put fake branches on trees, but it's not a feat of the can. And so I think we put in, we debated.
We went back and forth.
We thought that putting in the word feasible, like to.
To the extent feasible.
Was the best way of, of basically. Giving ourselves some way, they were also signaling that we're going to be reasonable about this. So it, it's not, we're not held to some. Silly preconceived standard that makes no sense given this one. That was the.
This monopole.
And the other thing I saw, I think the language, thought of it as which covers. The, the ifs, if there's a light involved, we get to get way more involved.
Right.
There's a light, that language.
Do you think that the way I put that in is? Okay. Anything else? Sandy, I think we made one change to amendment F to the wetlands districts at the last meeting. Um, in the table of uses for the activities incidental to ordinary residential use. Um, in the version you and I had worked on, we had made that not permitted in the prime well and buffer, but the board wanted to have it remain permitted.
Yeah. You know, the, that thing, the biggest issue is the degree. You know. Normal vegetation maintenance means different things to different people. And I think some of that wording is, um. You know. Mowing, I mean, they shouldn't, you know, the thing is that they start to put in. Lawn and then they mow and we're saying you shouldn't be disturbing the soil anyway. That's kind of. Not what's allowed. So I, it's not so much the P, but I think it's more the. The description of things.
Um, yeah, I think it's because earlier it says that the buffer is supposed, it shall consist of ungraded and undisturbed upland. So what does undisturbed mean? Undisturbed accepts. Motor.
Yeah.
That's the part that's confusing to me.
It starts too, right.
Yeah.
Someone has a lawn that isn't a buffer, because like you don't know it. So it's going to be kind of enforceable. It didn't seem fair to me at least. So I've been mowing. An edge of a lawn that encroaches into a buffer for us to step in and say, you can't move that part of your lawn anymore. That was the rationale that I had behind it.
Hmm.
There's really that, it wasn't meant that someone intentionally go in, do anything, but. There may just be a very longstanding thing that was missed years ago. And to then go back to someone and say, by the way, can't touch that part of your lawn, felt unfair.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, it, it's, I know it's just really difficult, but it's like, how do you get people to not create lawn these areas when they're. Not supposed to. I know we say, you know, they're not supposed to, but you know, then you say mowing and it, oh, so I can have a lawn. Like, I can mow it. So, yeah, okay, you know. It's, it's just the challenging.
I didn't have anything else in particular to bring up. I just wanted to make, give everyone kind of the last shot, because if you make any changes at the. Public, public hearing on the first, it's too late to get it on the ballot. So now's your last chance to really change. Obviously, we'll listen to. The folks at the public hearing on the first and you can choose whether or not to put this on the ballot, but we can't make substantial changes to it.
Um. Do we still have one audience member left? I don't know. Did you have some?
Yes, I do have something to discuss about Cherry Hill Builder Park, forty two fifty road. Your map that we'll find here. Um, a little while ago, we received a letter from Cherry Hill Builders when they were developing this Sawmill Road and. This is, uh, with, uh, White Rock Hill Road, Pedro, that development.
Yep.
Um, we were losing three quarters of our trail and he met with the, one of our trail, on our. Board meetings last year, Cherry Hill Builders came to visit us and we reached an agreement where we were gonna put the trail. So we knew already that was fine. We were losing three quarters of the trail. It was a big horse trail, called Sawmill Loop, right? Uh, it's mostly gone, that's okay, but we received a letter back that. That from fishing, that, them saying that fishing game. Um, was not, cannot allow us to have continued the trail. On this reroute because. Yeah, so I contacted them and asked them, where's the mayor on this? And you explain this to us. Well, Mr. B, we don't have. We don't have any issues. We don't have a dog in the fight about. Where your reroute is with, with Cherry Hill Builders and continue that trail. So I will kind of wonder what is going on here because. We got this letter and they pass that on. Oh, sorry, have a nice day. We're kicking. Her. Now.
So you get the letter from?
We got that letter from Cherry Hill Builders. Okay, so do you.
Tonight.
There were some changes that were made, right? I, I understand, what I'm told, okay, from our club president, Andy Foot, that some changes were made. In restructuring of the zoning and changing the house lots a little bit to accompany the roads. Is that correct?
Sure, yeah.
What was approved was approved.
Yeah. Carrie, Carrie's got some.
I'm, I'm trying to fill in a little bit of the background from what I've. I, so I wasn't here when the decision was made, but I've watched the, the recordings and looked into it some. So originally it was proposed that there would be, uh, I think a recreational easement through the open space to allow the, um, snowmobile trail to continue.
Right.
Um, it was then determined or discovered that. The recreational easement would subtract from the amount of buildable area in the open space, making it not. Enough open space in their open space development. So they would essentially lose one of their proposed lot, building lots. Um, to.
I see.
Make sure the proportions worked out to get their 50% open space. So the applicant decided that that was not. Something he was willing to do. He needed his 17 building lots and he wasn't gonna drop one for the snowmobile trail. So, um. That plan, that is when that changed. Um, and then in the deed for the open space, um. It states that the existing trails can remain, but, um, new trails need to be approved by fishing game.
That is the oddest thing I've ever heard.
So, and fishing game is, doesn't want to approve a new trail?
No, well, I think that they would have to.
I think it's, there's more than one person at fishing game and perhaps the person you talked to wasn't aware of the situation. I do know there's been conversation more. I don't know any.
Non-game program.
More recent. More recent, I know that Andy Foot has had contact with somebody.
Yeah.
Um, and her response was essentially, okay, show us a plan of what you propose and.
Right.
We'll review it, uh, but they want to see.
I think it was like Kate Wadiak or she's one of the people involved. I, there are several people there. She was.
When they came to us, they said, and we had agreement with them, set up where we would put it. And we were waiting and. And ready to go to do this reroute to connect that trail back in with Blanche Lumentary, also known as quarter eleven. Okay. Um, leaving that the way it is right now, that really cuts off a good percentage of the town. On the west side of Longy Mill Road, Bull Center Road to get to the main trail, quarter eleven. So we would like to get some traction here and we would like to complete this trail, this trail reroute and get it back connected.
Yeah, I mean, part of the issue with snowmobile trails is that. They're there year round. So even if you're only using them in the winter when the wildlife is hibernating. How would they use the, the rest of the year? So I think that's, but I, you know, I would. Check with fishing game and it's one of the Conservation Commission.
Which session of fishing game are we talking?
Like I said, the non-game program. Right, and if you have the N H B. Data check report I D from the application or from the project. That would be helpful to them because then they also know. Um, you know, what it, what they checked for, I think it is Blanning's Turtle in the area.
We went through this when we did the, uh, Pioneer Sportsman Club Bridge, same type of thing. We had the, uh. Impact study check with N H B, did we have any hits? And we had to work that. So this, so you're saying that we have to do the same. Do, did they have anything? Is there any N H B report from?
Yes, there is. And actually it wasn't complete because it, I mean, it didn't have, there was an additional blending sighting even closer than they showed. Um, but.
Do you have a, like, on paper, a proposal of where you would like to put the new trail?
We had, we had the map already, but, uh, we, we had it all worked out. It, it's, if you're staying at Brant Slender Dairy. Turnpike, it was a horse trail, went right around, right back. We lost, could say, three quarters of that. So what we have left now is the east side of the old trail. As our axis point, west side is gone. That whole section, or portion, section of trail is taken on, okay? That's fine. We agreed up on that. And then right on the east side along the edge of that set property. It showed the forest tree line where their property line is. We were gonna hug that edge of the trail. That edge, edge of the property, excuse me. And reconnect our existing trail with a U shape property and all the trails leading towards the high school and Timmins and, uh, that, that section of town. So we want to get this fixed and we don't want to just. Nothing. Uh, because it's cutting off a lot of people's access the way this is right now.
Is we also have to see what the approval is because I think some of the outside areas are like non-disturbance buffers. The perimeter buffer, so we'd have to figure out how to.
And the approved plan shows a couple of different locations with signs, um, some, a couple of the locations say no A T Vs and a couple of the other locations say no snowmobiles and no A T Vs.
Well, no A T Vs are allowed in town, period.
Right, but on the plan, it shows no A T V signs and then in other parts of the plan, it shows no snowmobile and no A T V sign. So it. The plan was intended to not allow snowmobiles in certain areas of the, of the property.
Of the development? Okay, well, that's acceptable, but on this, on the east side of this property. That's where the, the old existing trail is, was, and we want to reconnect back into that and finish it out so we can use it. And all the rest, the rest of the town. We used to pass. We used to pass and to, and connect the concrete into the Cardenia property and then Turkey Pond, right? Well, that was our old trail passes and that had, that was eliminated because of our issue that we had with Cardenia. They kicked us off the property. It was a mess, another development gone bad years back. So we got moved on to Bransland Dairy using corridor eleven passing that way. Birchdale. So that's why that trail is very important to the trail system, to get that back connected. Because right now you're cutting half, twenty five percent, at least twenty five percent of the town off from trail access. Like that. They agreed to it, they agreed to give us trail access and we, we went along with that. We want a trail access. We want, we want to finish the trail up.
So again, my question is, you know, what did, what did the planning board miss that having this trail would take away from? Their. You know, their, their fifty percent that they want to develop. I mean, I can see why a developer would, when he realizes, oh, if I let him put the trail, I'm gonna lose a lot. I mean. You're talking about a lot of money and I, you know, that's obviously what they're in the game for.
Yeah.
So I'm kind of curious what, you know, the board missed.
Well, I mean, it came out, so it wasn't, I mean, maybe it was governed later in the process, but it wasn't missed. Um, so I think you need to present your drawn out plan, present that to fishing game and have them review it. And then bring that back to the town.
Why is fishing game fucking us?
I don't know that they are. I mean, I, they've asked to see a plan. I think you just need to show them a plan.
Yeah, I, I. Talked to them. I know because there's the Blanning's turtles and other stuff in the area. I, you know. I, they may, they may not be an issue. It may be that Cherry Hill doesn't wanna. Deal with it, you know?
Of course not, of course not. They're in for the money, right? That's, that's what this is all about. I see that. So let's redevelop, let's rechange, let's change it so we can kick these guys to the curb. No, it doesn't work that way. That's why we had discussed a bunch of this, to uh, to have the trails up. We had their original.
But since the development was also subject to D E S approval. Which involves fishing game, it would be probably. Good to check with them on that and see if there's any issue. There may not be an issue, frankly.
Why we're tough on this stuff? It's plain and simple. We already were screwed over like this on White Rocket Road. On the road with, with a different developer. And they kicked us to the road and we had to scramble quick to figure out what we were gonna do. We had to reroute it. Fortunate by one landlord, Mr. Mr. Rick Wombolt, Ross Strigus, gave us. Gave us the hand and helped us out. We don't always get that. In this situation. It's not that easy. And we were in agreement, we were gonna have a trail back there, passage. Connecting back to. Branson there, we wanted, we wanted, wanted that. So. We will check. Tomorrow we'll make, make some calls. The fish and game be corrected. And find out that you have an N H B report, that would be great.
Yeah, the, the I D number.
Yes, yeah, exactly. We're there. We'll investigate that part of it, if that's affecting us or not. Uh, into where the proposal that we had, and we'll also. Come back with where this was, most of this was agreed upon to have. It's on the east side of that, that part, property that developed. So. We definitely wanna move on. It's, it's winter now and. Snow is upon us and like, why can't we get there? Why can't we get there? I'm sorry, you gotta get on it. Here I am. There he is.
Well, Warrens, I will just throw out, I have heard that some safety concerns about. Snowmobiles going along the edge of the stormwater pond that's at uh Sawmill and the. I think the engineer there is concerned about the potential for people ending up in the pond by mistake. Um, or maybe it looks like a fun place to ride on the edge of the slopes of it. Um, so whatever we can do. To make that as safe as possible, I guess.
Well, there are things, there are things that we can do to take care of that, protect that are, prevent that from happening.
Yeah, that's why I just wanna throw that out there, that that should be considered in the trail design.
The forester, tree harvester had gone through and did a bunch of work and had set it up. Already a makeshift trail for us already. He had got it, skittered it. And he went inspected, oh, this is nice, blah, blah, blah. And I said, you know, oh, no, it's not going there now. And that's, no, that's not how we operate. And we're not gonna get kicked to the curb again like what happened before. And that's why I'm here. That's why we need to get this straightened out. Fair enough.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I asked the board, I don't know. You know, I don't think we really can do much besides, you know, hey, and 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 give you some advice to it. You know, and wish you luck.
And make sure it's not in conflict.
All right, uh, I mean, I don't know how far along this development has gone so far. I know all they have within their streets. Sawmill Road and there another one or just? We're gonna go back out there in daylight and go walk it and know where the agreement was to have it. So hopefully we can. Get this matter fixed. Thank you. And we'll get it done.
Thank, thank you for the work, for the trails.
We don't get paid to do this.
Yeah, I know. No, I know Bo Pioneers. Nobody's making money getting them. But yeah, I wish you luck and, you know, I, I, I do appreciate what Bo Pioneers does for the town.
A very challenging weather, um, goes out expecting trails and I can't open the gates right now. No way with that level of water that's still running out. If you go in places, uh, look around, especially in wetlands, the water is. Two and three feet above normal. Water crossing behind the Pioneer Sportsman's Club right now where the bridge is, that grand twenty foot long bridge. Water is so high, it's just passing right underneath the grain mats right now, the mats over there. That's how high it is. Yeah, and I've never seen it that high before, yes.
Stazingness.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna move on with our meeting here, so if we can. Get out of here. Um, did we have minutes?
No, we don't, because we just had a meeting last week.
Yeah. All right, did you have anything else for us?
We're free to go.